All right, good morning. I'm calling for the regular schedule of the board's supervisors meeting for this Tuesday, August 9th, 2016, and ask if everybody please join the board's honor America with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first item on our agenda is public comment number one, and we're going to start with public comment. Yesterday afternoon, I asked Melissa Spencer to come and update us on the stover fire that we've had between Nevada and Ames. And Melissa, I appreciate you giving us an update as part of our public comment.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As Rick mentioned, per his request yesterday, I put together some information. I also have John Peever with DuPont and Rick Martinez, the Public Safety Director for Nevada, also with me to answer any questions that he may have on the update. Per the request, I did take a look, further look at some authorities that the county may or may not have when it comes to this type of situation. Really, there are none. I did touch base with the Iowa DNR yesterday to find out if there was anything with the air quality issues. The DNR said there's no authorities there with them because it was not God and it's not a hazardous material situation. I did have a chat with Jerry in Planning and Development yesterday about any, the county code and of course, the ag exemption prevents anything from a county standpoint. And the Iowa code for authorities at fires for the fire chief does allow him the authority to extinguish the fire as he sees fit. But in talking with Ray Reynolds, the Nevada Fire Chief, yesterday, there's pretty much there's not enough water available to put out a fire like this. If they did attempt to fully extinguish it, it would cause enough of a drawdown that it would put some vulnerabilities there to the communities that they're drawing that water from. With that being said, with the previous fires, because this is the sixth corn stove fire that we've had in about six years, after the 2014 fire that took place north and east of Nevada, there was discussion with DuPont and Fire Service Training Bureau at Iowa State University about looking at some extinguishing methods and doing some testing. But you know, DuPont did provide Fire Service Training Bureau bales to work with, but we never did have any follow-up from Fire Service Training Bureau on what the extinguishing results were. So that's something that will continue to just, as it arises to address that issue here with Fire Service Training Bureau. The cause of the stover fire was indeed a lightning strike. We did receive a lightning strike map from the National Weather Service in Des Moines that pretty much showed a dead-on lightning strike in the corn stove storage site. Nevada Fire and DuPont are continuing to work hand-in-hand to resolve the fire. These things do smolder, as we know, for many days up to a week. I myself was by there last evening and noticed a great production in the amount of smoke that was coming off of the pile. I have, if that's my update, I have, the board has any questions for DuPont or Nevada Public Safety that are here to field those questions.
Board, any questions for Melissa?
Just a thought, more or less, and this probably should be conveyed to DuPont as well. When we talk about training and mitigation and other types of things, have anyone explored, you know, like on the west coast, when they have wildfires, there's chemicals and stuff that they use to help try to distinguish fires in these areas. Has DuPont considered looking into something like that? I don't know what that cost would be, but whether or not because of the type of stover and the way in which it burns, it may or may not be affected. But I guess from the public standpoint, if we explored as many options as we possibly could, it helps the public feel a little bit better like that the company is trying to do everything it possibly can to mitigate these situations, which really, they have no control over, ain't no active guy.
John, let me introduce yourself.
Yes, John Peever with DuPont. I lead the corn stove feedstock supply chain development for this project here in Nevada. And the answer to that question is yes, we continue to investigate in many ways. One of them is there is an industry consortium that is together that's working to work on codes, standards, and understanding what, where regulations maybe should be applied and how these fires might be caught. Two key pieces of that was the provision of stover here locally to the fire school to test, but we've also provided material through this consortium to Idaho National Act to send fire tests, and we had those results. We look at all kinds of chemicals. This, these fires are more typical of a coal fire or an underground Ohio coal fire. And the key difference for them is the amount of oxygen that's actually contained within the material itself. And those chemicals just don't allow enough time to hold additional oxygen out to get them extinguished. But we do look at that, we look at volume control, there's been studies done on all the chemicals available and trying to see how those might fit in the future to help manage these fires. There is a lot of work going on behind the scenes. As well, our design of our storage sites is there to mitigate the size of these fires. So if you'll notice in this current fire, there's actually two what we call pads, separated by an isolation area of green crop. And we have not had an experience yet, although it is possible, where the fire has crossed to that second pad. And so today, there's a pad to the north with five sacks on it that are not consumed in this fire. So that's a key piece of management of these fires as well as keeping them from spreading into our neighbors or to other material.
John, this is the largest one we've had in Story County in terms of number of bales that have been consumed. Have you guys had a larger one anywhere, or is this the largest you've seen?
No, so this is the largest that we've seen to date. This is slightly larger than what we would typically expect to have in that this is our first established storage site. It goes back to 2012. It was added on to this year, and that's where that extended sacks are. So there's slightly more material here in a different configuration that occurred in this fire. Our storage sites are laid out to typically hold about 17,000 bales that we would expect to be vulnerable to a single.
And so, so my concern, John, and this is not for us to discuss today, but I hope we're going to have an after-action report where we can all get together and talk about this. So I recognize the logistics of the plant not coming online, and you guys expected it mean that you've got a stockpile of these. But as I understand it, so this site you mentioned was larger in terms of number of bales than we already have, but that site that's immediately south of DuPont right now, as I understand it, is much, much larger than anything we have.
That site is one of our largest. We have a couple that are that size. So again, let me clarify, yes, the totality of the site would actually be twice as large as the totality of the one that's involved. But there are four pads there, so in each of those pads, we expect to be isolated one from the other. Doesn't totally eliminate the risk, but there is isolation between those four pads. And each of those pads would be about the size I mentioned.
Perfect. Well, we really appreciate you being here today.
Oh, absolutely.
I think this is something that we're going to have to talk about as we go. I felt all along, and John, our legal counsel would tell me that I'm crazy, so I appreciate the ag exemption for ag storage, but I believe at some point, those stover bales stop being ag storage and start being commercial. And I'm not sure, I know what the law tells us the line is now, the line is, no, they're always ag storage. But I've appreciated that DuPont has been so willing to work with the public in trying to make these things safe. I just remain concerned, even with the buffer, how easy it will be for it to hop from pad to pad and we could experience something really, really tough. I think this is a taste of that, and so I'm looking forward to see what, if any, modifications we make based on the realities of this fire.
Thank you. We are open to that, and we do continue to debrief at every opportunity following one of these, see what we can learn, and make sure that we feel fairly confident along with our emergency response people as we can isolate. And I would also say, you bring up a good point. A lot of the totality of this is due to getting this technology, this industry introduced in the area and getting the plant ready to start up. As we move forward, our plans would be to have only about 40% of what's currently stored in these configurations stored there, and the rest stored in small sacks out on farm sites to be delivered to the plant where the, where your sites are.
So are you able to comment at all on approximate time table where you think you might be ready to be in full operational mode?
We are commissioning the plant, and we still expect to make ethanol this year. We're in the final throes of getting all the commissioning done, and we're going to start eating silver very soon, which is grateful to the community and grateful to the board.
John, do these stover bales have a useful life? So is there a point that the stover bale has degraded to such an extent that it's not useful for production anymore?
If we keep the stover dry, once it's, if we bail it dry and we keep it dry, we don't know how long it lasts. We have, bales have been in storage over four years, and they're basically in the condition of the day they were first stored. But the parts of the bales or the parts of sacks that get wet, so if we can't keep the top covered, if the sides get wet or the bottom so upset, those do start to deteriorate. And that life for them to deteriorate is a matter of months through the summer.
And so we've got to have a certain percentage of those bales in your stockpile right now that have deteriorated or are in the process of deteriorating. Do we have a plan for what we're going to do with those ultimately?
We're working on that as well. Several ideas on where that can go, and once we start feeding the plant, we'll have opportunities to start to investigate those ideas and develop the plan.
Well, we really appreciate you being here today. Any questions for John or Melissa, and then I want to talk to Rick Martinez.
So you've had six fires.
Yes, sir. If I, I believe the six number is probably a Story County number, and I believe that's accurate. We've had four fires that have been initiated by lightning, and those have been in storage sites similar to this, although as we said, this is the largest. The other two fires in Story County, plus I believe two others in Alamo County, were actually, one accidentally sat on a small set of sacks and three maliciously sat on very small, hundreds of 300.
Is there anything you can do on a redirection basis, knowing that lightning is your biggest foe here in this sense to redirect lightning at the sites?
We're working with that. Again, a new industry of this size, the insurance companies have told us that in over 30 years of ensuring similar material with farmers, they've never had lightning. And when we talk to lightning experts, they have never studied this kind of material. So that work is ongoing as well to try to figure out what is the way to protect this material from that kind of strike.
Well, good luck on that one. Melissa, just for clarity's sake, you had said that you had checked with the DNR in regards to what we have at the board level, at the county level, to interest us in this that you said?
There's really, there's really no ordinance is currently at the county level that'll allow the county to take any kind of action. This is not something that as a result of the fire can be used as hazardous material. That's really the one ordinance that could possibly be looked at, but it just does not fit in this case. I contacted the DNR at the state level to see, because we don't have an air quality ordinance here at the county level, to discuss if there is anything at the state level that should be looked at. And in talking with the DNR office, they advised that while there could be an air quality issue from, just from the travel of the smoke, they have no authority at the state level to level any, to look at any sanctions or look at anything to hold DuPont accountable for. The one service they said they could offer, we needed, was to come up and do some air monitoring and doing some dispersion models. But in seeing what I saw when I went past the site last night, I think we're kind of beyond that point to need that service. But because it was a lightning strike, it wasn't something that was intentional, it wasn't something that was an accident caused by something, by carelessness, the Iowa DNR also does not have any authority as far as what it comes to air quality.
Well, first of all, I'm sure Rick has already alluded to, we certainly appreciate your quick response in working with DuPont and so forth, and also gathering all of this information for us because, you know, when you don't have a lot of information or background in terms of how you deal with something like this, it creates all kinds of issues for the public to, you know, question this or that and wondering again. We've had just a few phone calls, you know, of concerns, citizens, and so forth. So being able to effectively answer those calls, you know, this gives us some grounds. We thought we were on solid footing in response in terms of authority, but I think the bigger, part of the bigger question is, is what is the company itself doing and trying to look to the future and trying to mitigate these types of situations, when, if, and when they happen? And I think that's an important thing as well.
And we do, and we will be doing an after-action on this fire as well, as we did with the last fire, and have discussions about where the items were previously with the after-action reports, see where those stand now, and come up with a plan to move forward on trying to resolve some of those, some of those issues that have been brought up. So that's something we will work on. We did try on Friday to get ahead of the air quality issue as much as we could per Nevada Fire Chief's request. Emergency management did put the message out on Friday to warn folks. At that time, we thought the cloud was coming towards Nevada, but we pushed that message out. And with that, through just us, through our Facebook, we had 86 shares and over 11,600 people saw that post from Friday to Monday, which that was hugely impressive to us. So we were trying to get the word out there to folks as much as we could ahead of time so they could take those appropriate precautions, depending on which way the winds blew throughout the weekends.
Sure. And Melissa, we do appreciate your response. I know a phone call I got from you, right on top of, in, John, DuPont's been a great neighbor. We're glad that you guys are here in Story County, but we are dealing with something here that nobody's ever dealt with before, and it's our responsibility to make sure that we're protecting the public interest in health as much as possible. So we appreciate being included in the after-action discussion and whatever report comes out of that. And one thing that I'm really interested in, clearly, we're stockpiling these in a way that we never envisioned we were going to stockpile them. I appreciate that you guys are trying to keep them on separate pads, but I think it's appropriate to take a look and see if that's a reasonable way to get through the rest of this fall until you guys start producing, because we're going to have more lightning. And for whatever reason, lightning seems to be attracted to these stover piles, at least anecdotally, it seems to be attracted to these things. And so we appreciate that you guys can dig into and whatever help we can be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Likewise.
And then before we move on from this, so yesterday afternoon, I went over and visited with Rick Martinez and Ray Reynolds in Nevada. They did a great job responding to this. I think it's fair to say, Chief, that it tested your capabilities to the extreme, and the amount of water that would have been required had it been an ongoing effort to suppress this would have been more than you guys could reasonably handle.
Absolutely. One of the primary concerns is the amount of water that's going to be used and the amount of manpower that we're going to have to put into the fire that was committed in 2014. We had people out there 24 hours and weeks to monitor that. And in that instance, we had ambulances, they ignited other fires, that sort of thing. So trying to get ahead of this kind of issue, whereas to everyone's satisfaction, because I don't want to have this happen again, I don't want to see anybody hurt, and I certainly don't want to see the problems that we have with the smoke, can ambers, and the ash and all that all over again. But it's not going to be easy, as you alluded to, this is, this is the first of its kind. There's going to be a lot of growing pains, but we're going to have to figure out what's going to work in the long run for everyone.
Well, we sure appreciate you being here today. We appreciate your response. And as I said yesterday, with the three of us, you and I and Ray, we'll be, please count on Story County to play whatever role we can in this, and we absolutely want to be part of that after-action and see what, if any, modifications we need to push for as we move forward to DuPont being fully operational.
One of the things that Ray and I have been discussing, and he's been reaching out, Ray is a board member of the International Association of Fire Chiefs, so he's got a lot of contacts with a lot of organizations across the country. He has been in contact with them, explained the situation and the problem, and we need some ideas, we need some help. If there's any kind of grant money or something that we can get to help us study this, we need to do whatever it takes. And it may take a long time, but if we don't, we don't take the initiative now, we're going to have, be having the same discussion, six months, a year, two years, or just keep going.
Yeah, so it feels to me like, and remember, you can comment on this, it feels to me like we had the, we had the last, what I would consider a fairly major fire that you just referred to, and there was immediate reaction. DuPont was great about contributing money to the, to the Fire Suppression Center, and it looked like we were full speed ahead and really trying to analyze these things, and then it just feels like it kind of petered, you know, the enthusiasm kind of petered out, and we didn't get, in my view, to the end of some of those conversations. Let's make sure we get to the end of the conversations this time, because this is, you know, we're excited about DuPont being operational. We hope that that is a long, long-term project. This is the first, we're the first place in America that's dealing with this thing. And what we're fortunate in is everybody seems to be really willing to work together to try to get the answers. We just need to not, not slide backwards at all.
I totally agree with you.
Well, thank you very much for being here today. Any questions for the chief?
Morning, Rick. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks. Laura, I see you want to speak. This is part of public comment?
Absolutely. Laura Olson, Ames, 705 Buchanan. Thanks for mentioning the public. I did not see this item on the agenda as of 10:00 AM yesterday, and I still don't see the item on here. I did hear mention of the public, the public concern. I did hear that it was a rather large, significant event. I heard a possibility of already discussions about possibly using some of the information from today to be moved forward into maybe policy modifications. So therefore, I'm very concerned that this was not on the agenda, it was purely an update.
It was purely an update.
Is there a reason it wasn't on the agenda?
Because it didn't surface in time to be on the agenda. This is one of those emergency situations, Laura, where we felt like it was completely appropriate for the board and the public to receive an update. No action. I completely disagree with you that anything happened here that might have policy implications other than we want to be part of the conversation. The county wants to be part of the conversation going forward. If there is anything that comes out of this, I would say it will be duly noted on an agenda before any decisions or considerations given. This was simply an opportunity to update the public. And Jessica, if you want to address whether you think we're on solid ground here.
End of the question.
Yeah, sure.
Jessica, can you explain the emergent situation? Because the fire was last Friday. If I understood that correctly, or was it even before it was actually burning?
It's still burning. It's still burning.
Still burning, yeah.
And, you know, I received, I had a couple people this morning even ask the question about what information we might have and so forth.
Now, I did notice that another member of the media is here, so someone got advance to notice. I mean, one that does typically not show up here, so someone had advance.
Yeah, you'll have to talk to Gretchen about how any of that happened. I know, I know this, so I'm the one who made the decision that we would take an update as part of the public comment. I had a meeting with Ray Reynolds and Chief Martinez yesterday afternoon, and after that, I thought it was appropriate for the full board, not just the chair of the board, to be updated on the situation. You tell me, Laura, how would you prefer that to happen, other than right here, right now?
Senator, can I interrupt just a second? I see a possible solution here, and this was not discussed among us. One of the solutions would be is as the chair, you want to just, this is the tentative agenda that's posted. You bring this to, you mention it, you get a second from any one of us, and then it's an actionable item or discussion or what have you. And that clears any question that anyone might have about proper procedure or protocol. Robert's rules of water does allow for a motion from the chair to do something of this nature, and usually, a second could, would suffice to, you know, move forward. I think that the way you did it was more than appropriate.
Yeah, this is still public comment, right? I don't remember the public.
But I think that that was how, that makes how that for future, if we have to have a situation, you should have to do this.
My name is Jessica Reynolds. I'm the first assistant in Story County. There was no legal issue with anything that the board did in this regard. If anything, they're being more open in discussing the issue when you're the public comment item. So there is no legal issue.
Yeah, I mean, so this, this just almost is hilarious. If it wasn't sad, it would be hilarious. Laura, she made exactly the same complaint two years ago. In fact, you filed with the Iowa Public Information Board, they came back and told you that you were wrong. They said this board was operating in the most open and democratic way that thing had heard. If you want to file another complaint, file another complaint.
I did not see that.
I'm telling you, this is exactly the way this is supposed to work. We wanted the public and the board to be updated at the same time. You, you think about how you would like that to happen, if not right here, right now, how would you have that happen?
It sounds like you had the discussion yesterday afternoon, and it has been the practice for a final agenda to come out on usually Monday night or Tuesday morning, where you've added names in the past of employees who were receiving raises or there were road closures. So since using your argument of it being an emergent situation, then it still could have made an agenda by this moment. So you asked me, so?
Well, absolutely. We've got additional road closures, and we have additional personnel actions that are not part of the agenda that come every week, Laura, and it happens every single week where it's not part of the agenda.
So you asked, how would I like it to happen based on your explanation that you feel this is an emergent situation? Okay? So I'm responding to what the attorney has said, I'm responding to your question, which was, how could it still have made the agenda with a few hours for us?
Yeah, and so I just disagree. I think public comment is, is intended to allow the public to comment on anything that's going on, and that's exactly what happened here today. Thank you, Laura. Any other members of the public that would like to comment on anything? All right, next item on the agenda is presentation for the 2016 Urban Renewal Area Program applicant, and this is Slater. And just to update everybody, the reason that this is happening, as it is, we heard from the other four last week, Slater was unable to get their application in by the posted deadline. I think there were some computer issues in Slater that didn't allow it to happen. The board made the determination that we would still consider Slater's application, but we would consider it separately from those that had their applications in by the prescribed deadline. Jennifer, good morning. Start by introducing yourself.
Jennifer Davies, I'm with the city of Slater, and I do appreciate the opportunity. The city of Slater's request for this year is for, again, for our Main Street revitalization due to some decorative sidewalks, some street lighting, and moving forward with a lot of overall plans for our two blocks of Main Street. We're requesting $45,000 from the grant process, and our total project is $60,000. This is marking out the one block that this, this year's project will cover. We are currently doing immediately to the south of that and have gone, have already And as you can see, it'll do the entire 300 block on Main Street and then on Marshall back to the alley. We will be adding decorative lighting, working with our new logo on banners, and as you can see, this is the grant that was approved last year that we're currently working on. This was actually just taken this morning. You can see that's a light post ready to be in, been working on the sidewalk.
And that's immediately south of the location you're talking about.
And this is immediate, this is the current project immediately south of, on the other side of Main Street. It's, and here's the one we did the previous year. So there's the light posts installed and the brick painting stamped in there to the corner.
So this is just a continuation, basically a continuation of a project you guys have been working on for multiple years?
Yes.
The board has been involved in those others. Remind me to what level we utilize this program to assist in these others?
Last year's project that we're currently implementing is for the same amount, $45,000, $60,000 project. The one that's finished here in front of City Hall, it was $21,000 from the county for a total of about 35. Other projects that have been utilized by this program is money is for a building on our Main Street that's being revitalized. It was, it sits between two. Um, it was, it sits between two, uh, two businesses, two properties, and our concern was that if it wasn't taken care of, it would actually degrade the other adjoining properties. So it's given us the opportunity to take that building and, um, create it into a usable shell, and we already have an end user for that to be, um, a cafe. And that's been, it's, it's been a, it's been an overwhelming impact for the City of Slater because everybody sees the activity, and we're getting more and more interest in our buildings and in our properties and bringing businesses to town. I haven't tracked the numbers as of yet, but it has a significant impact for us.
Questions for Jennifer?
My question is, um, in respect to the process, Jennifer. Uh, you mentioned that you had a computer issue. Uh, approximately how much time? You were aware of what, what the deadline, of course, was?
Yes.
At what point did you notice that you didn't, uh, your computer, uh, in trying to get this, uh, uh, here on time, uh, that, uh, you notified the county regarding the problem?
Um, I actually sent this on Thursday to, uh, due thirtieth.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I was out of the off, uh, we were closed Monday the fourth. I was out of the office the fifth, and noticed it on, on the sixth.
And so the deadline then was the...
Was the fifth. The deadline was the fifth.
That's fair.
This is part of a phasing project. Obviously, you showed us what would be a first phase.
Uh-huh.
So how long have you been working on this as the second phase?
Uh, yeah, cur, this, uh, presenting today, the request for today is the third phase.
Third phase. How long have you been working on the third phase?
Um, since right, uh, since about the end of July.
The last year?
No, just in the last, just since this, since 2016.
So let me declare, what you're asking for now is not what you were giving us, but what you're, you're, this is what you would've given us had you got in on the deadline? If this was supposed to be submitted by the fifth of July, right?
Right.
And you were still working on it in the middle of July?
No, what I was showing was last year's that was approved, so...
Okay. So, but this is the third phase you've been working on since last year.
He's asking, when did you decide, when did Slater decide that they wanted to do a third phase?
Oh, from the very beginning, two years ago, we would do it in phases.
Okay. Did, had you reached out to anybody in, uh, the, I believe, in the end? Would you have had something to do with this as far as contact information? Did you hear from Slater at any point?
Um, I was, very clear.
Good morning.
Hi, Leanne.
Leanne Harper, Story County. As Jennifer indicated, I think I received an email in July, six, that, you know, within the time of the computer issues.
Any questions for Jennifer about the project? Jennifer, thanks. So, process from here, uh, going forward, um, we're going to, uh, in, in the pipeline that Leanne has laid out and we've approved, we're gonna consider the other projects. After we consider the other projects, we will come back and on its own merit, uh, will not impact the other four projects, we'll consider this Slater project. Um, and, uh, board may take whatever criteria they want in mind as to whether there's anything granted. I would say, uh, items would be available funding, uh, the, the process that we use, I mean, we can use the, the value of the project, whatever the board wants to, uh, wants to utilize for that. Leanne, anything that I need to add on this before we go on? Okay, considerations of minutes from August 2nd, 2016.
Move approval.
Second. Emotion second, any additions, corrections, notations? Clinton, oh, go ahead.
No, I just say you have additions, but...
Uh, just for the minutes.
Just for the minutes.
Uh, Clinton?
Aye.
Chief?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Minutes passed. Personnel actions as listed for.
Move approval.
Emotion a second. Clinton?
Aye.
Chief?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Personnel actions. Consideration of claims for, from, for August 11th.
Move, approve.
Second.
Emotion and a second. Chief?
Total.
Chief?
Aye.
Clinton?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Claims pass. Consent agenda, board not listed but being added today are road closure seventeen oh eight and seventeen oh nine.
Move approval with no changes. So move.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, Clinton?
Aye.
San, uh, Chief?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Consent agenda passes. Uh, no public hearing items today. Additional items, discussion and direction to staff to compile amendments to the Urban Renewal Plan, Story County Urban Renewal Area, Leanne Harn.
May I just take a few minutes and go over, um, some of the basics of the Urban Renewal Area Program, again, for the board and public's benefit? And then, um, as was discussed previously, go over the projects, uh, the four initial projects that were received, and then, um, later on in the agenda, Lisa Markley with County Auditorial Office will be up to give you an update on where TIF funding is, and at that time, you can ask me to come back up and, and we'll discuss Slater at that point too. I do wanna note, go through the presentation I put together this morning. I included a slide for Slater, so I had that information available. Um, just some quick background, again, for the, just general information. According to your economic development policies, you've established, um, tax increment financing has four goals, objectives and strategies, or two, there are goals, objectives and strategies. There are four types of projects that are eligible for funding. Those are transportation, infrastructure enhancement, public land and trail improvement. Um, third is communication, utility, infrastructure expansion, and last, in the main street and town center revitalization. So those are the types of projects you may fund for this, this, um, grant program, and all those that were submitted do meet those requirements. Again, two, um, TIF funding cannot be used to participate in indirect disbursement or rebate to a private entity. Um, so that, that some may be kept in mind too as part of the goals, objectives and strategies. And lastly, applicants are expected to match at least twenty-five percent of the total project cost. So with that, um, this is the slide you see several times. I may just go past that to go to Project Red Project and see if there are any questions. Um, and then, in a couple slides, I have the direction that staff is seeking, um, for proposal minister, rural area. At that point, um, I'd ask that some of the direction regarding projects and possible amounts, so that I can come back next week with the draft plan on the, on the agenda to put out for public review. So actually, the total project cost for the all-inclusive playground structure at North Council Park is a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Um, actually, they're requesting seventy-nine thousand five hundred. And would you like me to go through all four, or do you want me to stop at each one, see if you have a discussion?
I would say if there's questions about it, we'll stop. Any questions about what Hudson presented?
Aye.
Cambridge, um, construction of the Cambridge Community Center. I, this is a continuative, continuation of a project started last year, uh, one point nine million dollars. They are requesting fifty thousand dollars. Are there any questions on the Cambridge proposal? I do wanna, as in the case of last year, there is an additional ground at Cambridge that funded the need to fill out, um, that, that does specify, um, some cost benefit analysis information. Collins, um, incidentally, renovation of, there are two sites along Main Street, um, under thirty-one thousand dollars total project cost, requesting ninety-eight thousand, twenty-three thousand dollars to, um, full seventy-five percent, and they're matching by twenty-five percent.
And it is possible for us to consider this as two projects, right? It's two separate buildings, different things done to both buildings, and basically half and half, right? It's basically sixty-five thousand dollars in each project.
Yep, that's how I understand it, from how they presented it. And then Story City, um, they proposed improvements to North Park project. Um, last year, the board approved improvements to South Park project. Um, they're requesting ninety-five thousand, seven, seven hundred fifty dollars total project costs is below the four hundred thousand dollars. And this later we'll come back to. Um, so those are the four projects to consider. There are then potential amendments that would be necessary to be completed to the Urban Renewal Area Plan, to add, include those sections on the screen. Um, section two is property to be added, and that's where we list the projects that are funded, and we also need to add the parcel numbers for new wind turbines that are being, going to be added. Uh, and that's, that's in addition to amending chapter eight of the code of ordinances. And then section five, again, adds the additional projects, it's a reiteration of what is done in, in section two. Section six, um, we need to add dates for adding the new wind turbine parcels, um, when those become tax of settled base values. Section eight, the county financial information, as the board will recall, um, that's a table that what our general obligation is and the, the most of the projects. And then exhibit A and B both need to be included too. A is the list of all the turbines by parcel number, and B is the map that shows all projects. In the past, we've not included the, um, taxable properties, the wind turbines. Now, my work with that board can include those, and better come in. I think that would be beneficial to have on, on the map, or maybe to exhibit E one, E two. But those would be the changes that would be, staff would request be directed, bring forward next week. And then I did just for the board's benefit, put this slide together, kind of snapshot of where funding has occurred, um, across the county for over the past three funding cycles. Um, you'll note Gilbert and Colo have never applied, or Colo has applied once, but Gilbert and Colo are the two entities that have not received funding due to this, in addition to the city of Ames, city of Ames as well. If funded, the total over the past three, if, and I did include this Slater in this number two, just for simplicity sake of mind. Um, if all five projects are funded over the past five years at the total amount as requested, the board will award a little over one million dollars in the past three funding cycles. And with that, the schedule, as you've seen countless times through this process, does bring me back next Tuesday with the draft plan, and then the public hearing will be a month later in early part September, or mid-part September, September 13th. And that's both public hearing for the ordinance revision, for the code of ordinances, chapter eight, and then the draft plan. And with that, I will be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for Leanne?
How many wind turbines have we talked about now?
I'm sorry, what?
Tell me about the new wind turbines.
There are seven properties to be added, seven turbines under construction. So in total, that takes us to right under a hundred and sixty.
Since I find myself new to this, talk me through why we, I can understand why we do it went far, but as wind turbines come to be in the county, this is something that on an ongoing basis, board would be inclined to make a policy move towards moving each turbine into a TIF status?
Yeah, so I believe that has been the practice. I can't speak to what's gonna happen going forward. I mean, you know, the board's gonna have to weigh in. To this point, I think we started with a hundred and twenty-eight wind turbines originally, and at that point, the board determined that if it was appropriate to put one commercial wind turbine into the program, why is it not appropriate to put the next one in? And that's how we've grown into the hundred and fifty range, and now with these seven, you'll be close to a hundred and sixty. I'm not sure that's the exact number. I think it's in that hundred and sixty range. Uh, the beauty for me, Marty, is it is, like, the original one twenty-eight were entirely within the Colo-Nesco School District, and since we have expanded out to include other school districts, since our schools are the primary, uh, recipient of tax, of property tax dollars, right, in the fifty, fifty-five percent range out in the county, uh, it makes sense to me that we would have as many school systems as possible as part of this program. If you believe that the six hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we've reinvested, uh, in the county has been to a benefit, then it makes sense to me that it would be spread out as much as possible. Fair, would you add anything to that, Leanne?
No, other than, um, commercial wind turbines go through conditional use permit process, and, um, through that process, process, as, as Rick said, has generally been understood that those at some point would be added. It has, has been the policy version at some point, that those would be added to the TIF. But, um, it has been really one of the case by case.
But this, the three of us will make a decision on this as it go back to your dates.
November 13th.
Yep.
First consideration on November, not, no, September 13th.
On September 13th is when this board could say, no, we're not gonna put these seven new ones as part of it.
Uh, and Marty, just for a little bit of, of previous history, I think with Brian sitting here, uh, when the first hundred and twenty-eight came in, working with County Attorney's Office, we were one of the first counties to put in a decommission clause, which basically talked about what happens after a life expectancy, let's say they estimate fifty years, and who's gonna be ultimately responsible for the cost of dismantling and, you know, and so forth. Uh, and this had never been done, uh, and yet we were successful in, uh, getting that in, and now I notice that a lot of other areas where wind towers are in place, uh, have piggybacked on what started here at Story County.
Johnson County, all the supervisors from Johnson County came over here in 2010 or '11.
That's correct.
Uh, to take a look at how Story County is doing things. Other questions? Leanne, what direction do you need from us?
Um, at this point, how would you like to, these sections, um, I would like to have the, the proposed amendments to the urban area outline, sorry, it was in my notes. So specifically, what projects would it involve?
Well, so previously, it feels like we've been putting everything in, and then we've debated and discussed it. When, when the time came, we can still remove it. So if we put something in now, we can still remove it. So the seven wind turbines, if you put them in now, you can still pull them back out. Any one of these projects at the full requested funding, you plug them in at that point, and then we can take them out, we can reduce the funding, we can do anything. I think that's been our past practice, and I suggest that we go with that same...
And I think that's worked well, uh, for us, because as you say, it gives us more time to think about, you know, the process, and I knew that, that I, one of the questions that I was going to at least ask you again, uh, and this will probably come up a little bit later, uh, when we make the final, uh, recommendation for the dollar amount that's gonna be rewarded, uh, but we did kind of take a look at some type of percentage, uh, and tried to talk about if all of them were worthy of consideration, uh, what would be the appropriate dollar amount that we could contribute towards it. So that was, that has been something that we've done in the past, doesn't necessarily mean that we'll automatically do it again, uh, because, you know, like you say, something may be completely non-funded at all, but if EFS is in the process, in the program to start with, that gives us the opportunity to discuss it.
Leanne, does that give you the direction you need? Include everything, and we'll talk about it more as we go.
I'll be back up after Lisa's done, so that you can discuss Slater.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next item is consideration of I-9 verification and E-verify policy and procedure. Hi, Alyssa.
Um, we are looking to, uh, any verified employer, which just means that is, that supplement or I-9 process, um, it's electronic verification of documents when you hire employees to verify that they're eligible to, in the United States. Um, part of that, there was a memo of understanding that was on the consent agenda, in order for us to even enroll, um, to be, to utilize this, a memo of understanding sign that was approved. I drafted a policy just so that we had a good policy of, that we are E-verified, it states where the records are stored, who, um, actually verifies the employees. I thought it was a good idea just to have it in writing, um, mainly because if they were ever subject to audit, we can pull up that policy and, and show them exactly what we...
So this practice is all best in three years?
Yes, it is. And, and the policy, I did ask that this, that they review, we wait, just because the policy is written, um, with federal regulations, we don't have to go over what we verify employees, and it's all spelled out for us.
And it doesn't... And it doesn't, this does not impact any current employee? It impacts potential future.
It don't have, yeah, and how we how we process that.
Okay, questions for Alyssa? So what she's requested is approval of this policy and waiver for the seven day review so that it would go into effect immediately.
Sure, move.
Motion second, further discussion. Clinton?
Aye.
Chiddy?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Passes, thanks Alyssa. Discussion and consideration of resolution seventeen oh seven, the Holy Grounds Minor Subdivision. Good morning.
Okay. This morning, we're looking at subdivision case number oh seven dash sixteen, the Holy Grounds Minor Subdivision Plat. It's located at sixteen oh sixteen oh two four Pleasant Valley Road in Milford Township. The applicant is James Cooper and his attorney is Bruce Pickle and Bruce is here today. So applicable regulations for minor subdivision plats, there are four main considerations to need to determine if a subdivision is a minor subdivision plat. It can contain no more than four new development lots. All development lots within the subdivision have to be fronted on the existing public street. There can be no land set apart for public improvements or use and no agricultural or minor subdivisions have been approved for this person before since two thousand and three, December thirty first. And so you'll see that this application meets all of these regulations and standards. So the nature of the request, it is a minor subdivision plat that will essentially reconfigure three existing parcels and make them into three new proposed lots. This would provide for separation of three different uses that are currently on the site, a single family dwelling, an agricultural use area, and a floodplain area that's been put into conservation, a private conservation, essentially. This will also allow the applicant to sell the existing single family home on a small plot. So proposed lot one contains a single family home, it's seven point eight six acres, it's a development lot. It is non-conforming with regards to the minimum requirements for acreage in an A one zoned area. We had an ag exemption before that allowed for the house to be built on a smaller parcel of thirty-five acres. And this ag exemption won't apply after the subdivision. Proposed lot two is twelve point four four acres. It's agricultural and use. It will be joined with a larger agricultural parcel to the north to protect the agricultural use. And joining it will give it frontage and access to a road. It doesn't currently have that. And proposed lot three is three point nine five eight acres. It has Bear Creek that runs through it, so it's in the floodplain and the owner has vegetated the area to protect the floodplain. And so dividing out lot three will just allow for a greater protection and separation of the floodplain area. This is Milford Township. Here's an absentee land use, you can see this is the current configuration. So here's a single family dwelling on this twenty-three acre parcel currently. You can see Bear Creek here runs through two of these parcels. This rectangle near the top is the agricultural use area, so it's in two of these separate parcels. And there are several single family dwellings in the area adjacent to a parcel. So here is the current configuration versus the proposed configuration. You can see that here's the single family dwelling separated out on lot one. Lot two contains the entire agricultural use area and lot three contains the majority of that floodplain.
Now, there has the single dwelling, is that a proposed dwelling or is that already there?
That's existing, yes.
That's existing?
Uh huh, and it will remain.
Right, okay.
So here's the flat map, it's small, it's a very large plat. Site photos, you can see this is the letting agricultural parcel that lot two will be joined to. This is looking east from lot two and lot one. I know it's small, but you can see row crops are here. You can see the existing single family dwelling, this is looking southeast onto lot one, and there is a small pond south of the dwelling on lot one. Here's looking to east onto lot three and Bear Creek is running right here. This is the access to lot three from Pleasant Valley Road. And this is kind of what the vegetation on lot three in that floodplain area looks like. So we mailed notification letters on July twenty-second for the planning and zoning commission meeting and on August fifth, report supervisors need no comments written or verbal word received. We also routed this application for conceptual review and rerouted the complete application for interagency review. We received several comments from departments. Otters Department just commenting that it has to be a minor subdivision because of previous splits. Floodplain manager comments on development in the floodplain area and just that the septic is all on lot one with the main comment from the environmental health department.
But not necessarily a problem?
No.
Okay.
That's a good thing. So points to consider, point one would be that there are three main uses in this area and they're split across all three parcels currently. The subdivision will just divide those into a logical, rational division based on those use lines. Existing single family dwelling will become, will be put into greater non-conformity in terms of the minimum lot size for A one parcels, but we feel like this is a good trade-off in terms of putting that separation for the uses.
And it's undersized now.
So.
Right, it's not like we're taking it from where it's acceptable to below, it's already below.
Right, it's already below. It will protect the agricultural use of lot two by joining it with a larger agricultural area. All lots will have frontage with this proposal. Again, lot one is the only single, is the only development lot really because of that single family dwelling. There are four other adjacent parcels in the area like you saw, and those are all non-conforming with regards to the minimum lot size as well. And only eleven of the adjacent parcels in the area contain, eleven of, six neither contain a single family dwelling or an agricultural use because it is a floodplain area, Story County Conservation of some land in there for the South Sound River area. So the recommendation from the planning and zoning commission was to recommend approval of alternative one to the Holy Grounds subdivision as the fourth in the case, SUV oh seven dash six dash sixteen. They did comment on why lot one couldn't be reconfigured to meet that minimum acreage size, but again, that wouldn't allow for the sale of the single family home on that smaller parcel. The owner wants to maintain ownership of lot three to put that on the consideration rate.
Absolutely. Now, this one looks to me like it's just common sense getting into this.
Yeah. So planning and zoning and our original recommendations were both, were both alternative one.
You recommended that to P and Z, P and Z five oh said, yeah, we agree with that and now it comes to us. We don't have many that are this clean, do we, Jerry?
No, that's not, I'm not that important.
Are you, questions?
None.
No.
Thank you.
Very good.
So with that, I would take a motion on resolution seventeen oh seven.
Motion to approve resolution seventeen oh seven.
And alternate, and option one.
Yep.
A second.
We have a motion, a second, further discussion. Chiddy? Clinton?
Aye.
Sanders, aye, seventeen oh seven passes. Ammune, nice job. All right, no agency reports today.
Joe is back?
Joe, it hasn't, there's no way it's been a quarter. Joe Quakers here to report to us, IRBM. No show and tell pieces today. You were here, what, two weeks ago? You can't have that much.
I'm coming back every two weeks.
All right, good.
Kind of heat it up, no pun intended.
Last time you say you're going to talk for five minutes and you talk for thirty minutes.
So you guys kept asking questions.
All right, just checking.
This time, well, Joe Quakers, Story County Conservation, Integrated Roadside Vegetation Management Resource slash Vegetation Management biologist, extraordinary since nineteen, back in the day. Eighty-nine, I guess. I'm going to start from the end and go to the beginning.
Okay.
That way maybe we'll go quicker. Year end numbers, this is just, this is actually my normal quarterly report. I showed up a couple of weeks ago because weed pressure had, you know, lit the phone up a little bit. And I'll report on that in a minute too. So we threw threw together some numbers, it's been a long time coming, I'm six staff reports down still, so I hope Julie's listening to this. We did about sixty sites for planting, that's following, following Darren's crew when they go out and do regrades and things. As you know, they've been more or less repairing, haven't really got a chance to do a lot of big projects, but I think that's coming up. That's when we really started piling on the acres and, you know, instead of driving around. So sixty sites of about twenty more than average. And I've kept an average since nineteen ninety, so, and I'll publish all this. We did about forty acres, roadside acres, okay? That's planting. As far as planting CRP ground, we actually don't do that. We do have that capability in our policy to plant if we have to. Well, we did one, two sites for two acres, one acre piece. That's to help somebody out when there's absolutely no other way they can get, get it done. We, we will mobilize and we charge for that, okay? That's in our policy there. The other thing is we try to let, we like to rent out our planting equipment and we did that. Now, these numbers are not exact, but the standard deviation is not significant, if you remember statistics, so. Fifty-five landowners for eleven hundred acres. That's pretty big. Nineteen, in, in the year two thousand, we did about sixty landowners for eight hundred acres. So that was, you know, the peak of CRP then, it's kind of slipped down, way, way, way down.
Right.
Our average was under a hundred acres for the last five years. That's how much our, our drill sat in the shed and hole, but they really turned the wheels this year, so.
Well, it's got to be a direct correlation with the price of, the price of corn and bean, didn't it?
Yes. And believe it or not, you know, they track our soils down the river and we are identified, and I've probably mentioned this before, the state of Iowa and Illinois and Indiana and southern Minnesota, they're pumping a little more money, the Fed, you know, the federal branch of the government wants us to kind of interact up and we're doing that. So there's a little more money available to, to get the rent up on some of the CRP program.
It just makes common sense, Joe, that as, as CRP ground goes up, nitrates in the form of runoff has got to go down.
We, we, we're pretty happy with that. I would like to see more of our open ditches that I'm going to report on, but we do it right now. Tyler, right now, is out there today. We built a sprayer that we can use from the tractor so we can get in closer without the UTV, without a Polaris, we can stay protected inside the cab. Obviously, our, our chemicals are state of the art, they are approved for drains, ditch use, and you have an aquatic lake.
And the only thing we're trying to keep down there is the trees.
Brush, re-spray from all the hardwood, we've done cutting.
Right.
And so it, it's a little disappointing to us when we can't access these things. We've talked to most landowners, all of them actually, several times. And it's, you know, right now the corn is eight, nine, ten, twelve feet tall and some spots is, I don't know, about twelve or at least ten. And unless they give us permission, and some of us, some of them do, to go ahead and crowd that edge where the spoils of the open ditch might be, and we'll drive our tractor in there with the sprayer on the back, it's on the three corner, and it's a boomless novel, so we can shoot out about twenty-five feet and we can hit the brush. And it's, you know, we have everything calculated and measured out so we know what we're doing as far as our rate. But still, it's hard, you know, there are some areas we just can't get to because they don't want us to drive on the corn or in the beans.
Well, can't or won't are two different things, right? We could get there because we have an easement, but that's not enabled to do.
That's not enabled to do. If you want the phones to ring.
Absolutely, I'm with you.
So we need to work with those folks.
Yep.
And, and we're getting there, but that, that's, that's a big deal. That's a big deal for us. So positive is there's a lot of CRP going in on our open ditches, which is nice. Let's see. Mr. Chiddy, you asked about wildland fire, prescribed fire last meeting. I did the numbers, we did one site in roadside for two and a half acres. Typically, we do about seventeen to twenty sites and the acres are a lot more than that. So we need to try to up our, our prescribed fire in roadside. It's one of our goals to get that, amp that up.
I would ask about that on a follow-up basis and just like I told them, come see you, come call you. You're asked to have your department work with them if that's something they want to do because I think people are well aware that they've grown up with the fact that burning is a positive at the moment.
Well, we talked about fire a little bit today already, we'll just, but yeah, we're trained on, on this and, and, yeah, give us a call, five one five four six zero seven nine zero three. This is county issued phone right here. That was again, beginning on anything you want to, we talked about last couple of weeks ago, this is an important thing here, listen up. Contract sprayers started August first to do Indian Creek and Union Township. My staff, not me, because I haven't had the time, but they've been out there, almost have Palestine done and Collins. So now we're hitting some of the other areas that the road department may have, especially around the bridges where the brush has grown up through the guardrails. It's a big thing, we used to go out and cut those, we just haven't had time, so we're knocking those back. Aaron has done a few projects, they've been able to get out and do some work with their equipment. We need to get up on some planting. Keep in mind that August is a tough year to grow things typically. This year, we've had plumbing issues, so we've got to get on that. I'll stay positive because I already hit the grain stitch, lack of access thing. In the dry spell we had, I'd see a lot of recreational mowing, you know, I call it recreational, and a lot of recreational spraying in roadside. And, you know, I keep harping on this, if we're going to, if we're going to mow a roadside, we've got to keep mowing it. It just opens it up to a lot of weed pressure. If I was going to bring a show and tell today, it would be to label off my phone for a typical herbicide called Crossbow. It's a typical herbicide that farmers use, landlords and operators, it's legal to use in roadside, fence roads and other things. However, it has a environmental clause. Environmental clause, I won't read it, but I just did over here. Says do not, very toxic to aquatic wildlife and or fish, living organisms in water. And so the way I look at our roadside, especially after rain, we've got to be kind of careful about that. So that is why there's a delineation between the herbicides IRBM use and the herbicides that your normal landowner farmer may be able to get from the cobalt. Very two different animals. So that's why we want to try to keep some of the pesticide that is supposed to be sprayed on their side of the fence and what we can apply. And that is communication and education and my phone just needs to ring more when these folks have some issues so we can take care of it. Wow, that was like a sermon. Deep brothers and sisters. I think that's about it, any questions?
Questions for Joe?
On the drainage district, drainage district access during the dishes, I mean, it would just, would you think early is better than later? When you were talking about how far the corn's got up, don't you think either in a farmer I'm aware of, and I know a few, that would probably be less inclined to let you in their field and knock down an eight or ten foot corn crop as opposed to get in there once, you know, five leaf, you know, three feet because of the, it's, corn planted as a grass, it's pretty resilient. But the thing is, if you're going in later, I think maybe your timing might be the issue. Just a thought.
Okay. Well, I do have an answer to that.
Hire the people and spend more money.
The best time, research, sorry, I'm going to interrupt, oh, sorry, just checking. The best time that I have found, we used to spray brush a little earlier. There are contractors that go out. The thing with brush, especially here like this year, is you mislock it early. So the best time is between the first of July and the end of August. The end of August, it starts to cool down, you're going to notice cottonwood leaves coming off the trees, believe it or not, in a few weeks, and we're going to start fall. So that may be an option. The option I like is if they just pump buffer strip or an ax.
Well, we need the buffer strips along the ditches anyway. And so, the ultimate goal here, Marty, is to continue to make sure that we view those grain ditches a little different than farming right up to the edge of it. And Joe's doing a good job reaching out to these people. We just need to continue to, it's getting better, isn't it, Joe?
Yeah.
Let's finish positive. It's getting better. We just need to get all the way there.
It's all positive.
Yep.
All right. Thank you for the...
Thanks, man. Yep. Next is environmental health. We're reporting, we do have a board of health meeting today too, which is always so exciting. Margaret, how you doing?
I'm great. So...
You're not dressed like you're going out in the field today, Margaret.
I know. I, yep, you're right.
Usually seeing you in your work boots.
Okay, so Margaret Jane from Environmental Health. And I'm trying here. Okay, so, good morning, everybody.
Morning.
So, I'm going to give you a rundown on the numbers for fiscal year sixteen. So, we had ninety new permits and ninety-seven septic inspections. Those are privately done, and then we do the follow-up on it. So, pretty good compared to the previous year and matching twenty-fourteen fiscal year. For wells, we've issued thirty permits. Nine have been water. One has been a de-watering permit, which is kind of fun, it's a different one. And it is for the sewer line over by the plant and I-35 down that way. They have to de-water in order to lay the line, and then they'll pull those wells. And they're discharging directly to the stump river, but there's a lot of brick racks, so there's no problems that I can see. Another cool water well that we did was for a house farm just north of Cambridge. So, it's fun to see a little different agriculture in this area. Uh, let's see, we did twenty-five pluggings, five rehabs, a hundred and sixty-one water samples, and fifty kind of transfer well inspections. Brains to counties, we spent all of our branch this fiscal year. Let's see, or twenty-sixteen, and then we've already spent about four thousand on this year's branch. We do, we have a contract with the state for septic pump inspection. There's two in Story County that we do. Earl sanitation and Drain Tech. Rota Rooter is actually done by Boon, even though they have some land application sites in Story County. And then we also contract to do two in Marshall County. That's their sanitarian is not interested in doing that. It's not, it's not general knowledge that land application is allowed. In most of the state, there are some areas, especially urban areas, that do not allow land application. So this is Drain Tech site. All of their land application goes basically on their property. So, boy, this is a really bad vote, we apologize for that. But top left just kind of shows the general location, it is Barilla. And so, Drain Tech is on the south side of the road there, over to the east.
Does their ability to do this change at all if that gets annexed in the city of X?
They are, that's a tricky question.
Okay.
Yeah. They're working with city of X on that.
But it is a question that's been asked?
Yes, absolutely. Yes. So generally, that's where they're located. All of their land application goes there. They have to keep books, we keep track of that. And then, so some of the issues is there's a well on their site, and they're not allowed to apply septic within seven hundred and fifty feet of their house, so that's kind of an issue. And then, the green strip, top right photo, the green strip is where they do most of their land application. And that includes, and the bottom picture show, the doggy poop bags from the dog park in Ames. They get, they pump all those tanks. And then, regular septic from tanks. And then also, the grease, the grease from the grease traps from the restaurants. That is totally itty, because that really doesn't decompose. But it's still allowed.
And that's not anything set by the county, right? This is, this is all...
This is state, yeah. This is state. And I'd love to get my hands on these regulations, because there's some huge problems. The problem is that the application rate is X. And if they dump it all in one little spot for an area as big as this room, that application rate applies to the room, not the spot. So that's the biggest problem with the regulations right now on transportation. But it's all legal. Earl sanitation is basically two places where they land apply. One is, let's see, so one is kind of, kind of by Zering, and that is where a wind farm is. And they have the rights to strip of land along, along stretch of the, where the turbines are. And then, another one is on a farm field. Both of them are very isolated, not near people. But again, the, you know, the, there's a lot of plastics in septic that just live on the surface, because these are not incorporated in. It's, it's a gross state. It's, it's good to do it in the, it's not hot, so anybody gets just a bad job. Because, yeah, we earn our money on those. Okay, back to better, easier things. Pools, tattoo, tanning. We just turned in our annual report for the inspection program. We have a contract, it's a three-year contract with the state. I own a department called the Pelton Seco Six. So, in the county, those, including Ames, there's forty-four pool facilities. And that includes, one facility could include a pool, a spa, a slide. So, they can be very complicated. But the unit, or the whole facility then is counted as one. Forty-four pool facilities, hundred and eighty-two violations within this year. The top violation is the water testing frequency. We've had to close a couple pools based on water quality issues, flooring levels. Let's see, seven tattoo facilities, seven violations. Top violation is posting certificates, I quote. So, a safe group of people work at you, it's the, you know, government. Tanning facilities, there are two violations. Top violation is again, posting that. They seem to be pretty safe. There's pretty much standard light bulbs that you can put in, so it's hard to cheat on those kinds of things. Again, the state part of cast, no tanning under the age of eighteen, and that did not exist. So we're just still tanning the younger kids. Uh, let's see, enforcement, generally speaking, one overdue time of transfer binding agreement, and that's for demolition, it's not a real big deal. Three outstanding notices, violations, well plugging, things like that, septic systems. Complaints, we've had a terrible burn all wastewater once. Someone has complained that wastewater is being applied to a farm plot, and that produce is being sold and given out, so we're working with that. Manure stockpile on Sand Hill Trail, the N.R. has gone out and looked at that. They've got six months to incorporate the manure into the land down there. Oh, easement, we had complaint on easement. We've had chicken manure stockpile, urban subdivision, several Presview complaints. And let's see, oh, and then a common road discharged charcoal from Scenticle Lust Mediation. So, as you can imagine, we got a few calls. Those pictures show discharge from the gas station. And it looks like oil. I could see where people would be totally afraid, but that was actually charcoal stained. But had that clean, had them clean that. The N.R. was also contacted on that as well as the city. Trainings and meetings, we all had to get our blood work, blood work pathogens. Read up IOWA board, I'm on, so I've been in some meetings with that. Met with a reclamation specialist out of Presview. No good leads on that as far as getting money or ideas on getting that. There just really isn't a whole lot out there for that type of project. Matt attended the county IT conference and did some online training. Kathy went to the annual D meeting. Latest, Dakota Access Pipeline Committee, not a lot of involvement from our department. Presview, mobile home park closure announced. I think we will meet today again at two o'clock to discuss this with Brad and maybe his attorney. We've had inputs on two bed and breakfast. The irons have spent quite a bit of work and continues to be. Right now, we need to get rid of the mound that serves the club, and that has to be changed, because that's where the houses are going to be built, wherever the mound is. And I'm going to recommend that they be permitted by the N.R. or not by the county, because it's a pretty large operation out there. And I completed the septic installation in place for the nineteen final septic system, get regrown, watershed. Oh, and then the D-Orbit loan, I forgot about that. And then, one thing I just wanted to brag about is we finalized our work with Harden County. Ton of work, but learned a lot and brought in about thirty-five hundred foot capital.
Okay.
And I think that's it. Yes, thank you.
Questions for Margaret? Margaret, good job. It should be a fun meeting today. Those of you that don't have anything on your schedule, come back at two o'clock.
Absolutely, yep.
All right. Other reports, TIF funding update from the county auditor. And first in is Lisa Moore. Lisa?
Hello. I probably should have, you know, pushed the little on agenda to get me combined with the N.R. But I think, so, there you go. Yeah, listen to me, so... I did provide you some updated information. You know, we've had this conversation many times. There is, it's always a moving... The TIF projections are just that, they're just projections. And if you add some, then those serve a late awhile, so they're not going to come immediately and things like that. So, so what I'm trying to give you is a overview of where we've been and where we're at. The three-point one that you borrowed against TIF revenues back in fiscal year thirteen, which is back for Dayton's Lake, Better, Eleven Street Bike Trail. There's a balance of one point nine nine five two on, or you get on that. And there it is, it's due, it is paid up June first of twenty-two, fiscal year twenty-two. We did internal...
It was a ten-year, right? When you took it, it was a ten-year.
Right.
Yep.
Um, we did a internal one that we paid up in October. And then, we had a, we just took one out of FY seventeen, which is, you know, the Florida way. So I'm not going to talk so much about that. The urban rebuild projects that you've done, we gave you a summary of those. Those, a lot, some of those have been extended as far as when they need to be submitted. And so, there's carryover dollars every year. And then we have success, and they have until this time to draw down the money, this time to draw down the money. So what ends up happening is there's a lot of manual calculations and manual carryovers and things like that in order to make this work.
It's what you love about it.
Right. So FY sixteen actual, for the projected balance of unused TIF dollars halfway down the page, the FY sixteen actual dollars that we brought in for TIF revenues was eight twenty-five, nine ninety-three, fifty. Of that, our debt obligation was three ninety-eight, seventy-sixty-four, fifty. Our urban renewal obligation for the projects that you approved in... Well, the urban renewal remaining obligation is two twenty-five, one ninety-five. So the total balance at the end of fiscal year sixteen was four twenty-one, over seventy-two, thirty-two. For FY seventeen, you're going to bring in projected one million seventy-seven. Your debt obligation goes up to five forty-six, seven seventy-seven.
That includes the one point five.
Because that includes the one point five, the payment on the one point five, correct? Your urban renewal obligation is still is outstanding, is four sixty-nine. It's still the dollars that they have to draw, people have to draw for approved projects. So your balance that you will have available for projects that you're putting into this year's, this year's TIF projects is four eighty-two, five sixty-one.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep. And we've got requests, I think it's about three hundred and seventy-five, if we were to grant all the requests right now. So we've got enough dollars that if we deem the requests appropriate, we could grant all of those.
And that's drawing fifty percent?
Just at fifty percent, which we're not going to go over, right?
Any questions?
No. I appreciate the word that you and your office does on this. I know what the public doesn't get out of this, the TIF, the calculations are painful and elaborate process. You guys quietly do a very good job, keep supporting, appreciate it.
Quietly? They do a great job. I don't know that I would call it quiet.
Thank you, Marty, for noticing that I'm quiet about it.
Oh, that's just good politics, right? Hi, Gilly Ann.
Hi, I told Darren to be back.
I've heard you describe a lot of ways, Margaret. Quietly has never been one of them.
So as part of the earlier discussion, this is the board's opportunity to now give direction to staff, whether you would like a springboard or Slater applications as well. Draft documents next week.
Yeah, board, my feeling is this one is the same. We know that we can fully consider this one without negatively impacting our consideration of any of the others. I'd like to see it included, and we can discuss it more fully. I know that both of you have concerns about precedent set when something does not meet the deadline. I think we need to have that full conversation. I think it's a reasonable conversation to have. But I believe we have it from the, from the point of view of it's included in the project until it's listed, until it's not.
And I guess my question, based on your comment, is that if we went forward and approved it, we still have the opportunity for discussion at the next opportunity when we talk about the appropriate dollar amount?
Yeah, you're not approving anything today other than its inclusion in the document, so that we can fully discuss it.
Well, let me at least say that one of my key reservations for something like this is, and I realize that unforeseen things can sometimes happen. But when you're pushed against a timeline and you're talking about seeking funding requests for X number of dollars for a particular project, I think you need to build in some possible contingencies in a timetable that if something does go awry, that there should be an immediate phone call or contact. And in Story County, you know, people can get the drive if for some reason they can't be able to transmit something in a timely fashion. And so, I, I really believe that that's got to be something that we need to talk about, we need to discuss. We need to have a clear understanding so that all tax entities know that if we've got deadlines that needs to be met, how are we going to basically deal with those? And the one exception probably would be, is to be, is if the person who is responsible for doing that had an unforeseen illness or something that prevented them from being able to perform their duty or obligation, you know, then that is a criteria that I think we need to be able to consider. But I, I'm going to struggle with this one, basically, because of that concern, not because of the fact that we have the ability to find, to fund each and every one of them.
Sure. So, I mean, Wayne, I think you're dead on. And so, let me just go through how I'm seeing this at this point. I think we've got four projects that were submitted in a timely fashion, and we get to consider those projects as we consider previous year projects. And it's based first on available funding, then on merit of the project, then on consistency with how we funded those kind of things in the past, and then we make the final determination. Slater, I believe, should get considered, and it should be considered in that same way, except there should be the final caveat of what if any impact does the reality that it was not submitted in a timely fashion have on our ultimate funding? I just think it adds up one more, one more criteria that we've got to consider as far as project. We still consider the merit, we still consider available funding, we still consider consistency. We consider all those things, but then you add in, okay, however it ends up on those other things, we've got to also accept the reality that it was not submitted in time. And does that mean that it's going to be excluded? Does that mean that it's going to be partially included? Or does it mean that it's going to be included? And I just think for today, we get there by including it in our document. And I just think for today, we get there from, by including it in our documentation, and then we have the full conversation. You're discussing, is it September 13th that we have that full discussion?
Well, it begins next week.
Begins next week and ultimate decision on September 13th. But I think you're dead, we need to have that full conversation. So I'm just guessing, we don't throw it out today? We could throw it out today.
Yeah. Okay, well, I mean, I appreciate, you know, your explanation on that. That's, and just because my reservations is there, all the other criteria, I, I believe is consistent, it, it's certainly there. That's the one area that is going to be problematic. And I'm not saying that I can't, my mind can't be persuaded to go in a different direction. But I, I do think that some, somewhere down the line, deadlines and timetables, particularly when it requires funding requests, does carry high bar. And I know, sitting on CERCA board and so forth, where we've had several funding requests from different counties, cities and counties, that, that deadline resonates quite a bit in terms of how it impacts everybody else.
Well, we're going to set a precedent on this, considering, Wayne. Whatever we decide, we're going to set a precedent, because this is not the last one that's ever going to come in.
Like us, true.
And, and so we better just recognize that there will be a precedent set.
But I, I'm willing to allow the process to move forward and then we'll have that discussion.
Marty, any problem with it being included at this point?
Leanne, get back to you on that. Leanne, I mean, submissions from all these other communities, how early do they come to your office with these?
Um, I just.
Just guess, you know, say, they, they, I've got these in June, I've got these in May.
They were all, I think one was a week prior, like a Friday prior to the Friday to the deadline. And then I think the other two were just about a week. I know we had one that was in the liver. And it was definitely about a week prior, a week, a week of, a last week of June, a week, generally it's a weekend, maybe, and so even prior to the deadline.
So I guess taking into account a computer issue didn't make this an anomaly, as far as when your offices were receiving these applications?
No, I, yeah, in the past year, I've received them on the deadline. And just for the board's reflection and color too, the changes we made to that, um, developed the policies, kind of turned the process a little bit upside down this year too, and that board and staff is going to hold meetings of potential applicants, well, and advance the deadline too. So there should be a, at least knowledge on my end and improvement as well, so that we know that these are potential projects coming in and we have to follow up and make sure that they're coming in, I mean, that we can address which we go with, if it's available, the staff can do that, but, but that will help, that will help to future.
I do share Wayne's concern. I'm sure it's all educated, he's probably got stories from here till dark about people bringing stuff out of beyond deadlines. But I, once again, I love the set present, because the thing is, people, I guess, be part of the conversation going forward. But I can't say where this is anything that I have a problem today taking forward to bring that before us.
Yeah, I just want us to be able to consider. Jennifer, do you want to say something? I think we're where you want us to be, but go ahead and try to talk us out of anything.
I just want to reiterate that I did submit it on June 30th. Our mayor was in the office and signed it. If you have seen the full application in the front cover, he did sign it on the 30th and it was sent that day. He was very well aware, he was applying for it and was there. And when I, and when I got back to the office on the 6th, the, the balance of the email showed up, so, and that's why, and that's the first I had. I would have absolutely wanted in if I had to, but I didn't, wasn't aware of.
Sure.
Yeah, so in other words, you weren't in the office on the 5th immediately, in other words.
No, I was not in the office on the 5th at all.
Yep. So I believe that all of this is.
That's my submit on the 30th, knowing I.
This is information that helps.
All of this is something that we ought to consider when it comes time to actually consider this. I would just like it to be there for us to consider. I'm suggesting, if there's no objection, Leanne, you include this at the full amount as part of our documentation.
Right.
All right. Public forum number two, this is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items not on today's agenda. Board may not take any action today, but we might in the future. Anybody wishing to address us on anything? Seeing no one moving, liaison assignments, Wayne?
Passed, yeah, she was gone at this time.
Marty?
No.
And Board of Health at 2:00 PM today. Announcements and supervisors, Wayne?
Just briefly, the Conservation Board met last evening, another interesting meeting. It actually rolled on quite quickly. And we will have just a couple things that'll be brought to us at a later date. And one was the, consider the acceptance of the property from the ISU research part as per agreement and recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors. That'll be coming next Tuesday's meeting. And the, another area that received considerable discussion was the Charlotte Hattery report that we'll actually be doing a lot of the design work and so forth. But it was a very good meeting as, as usual. And I just wanted to compliment, as always, the thoroughness of the board and how they roll their sleeves up and get directly engaged and involved in many facets of the program. And one of the highlights was talked about by some of the volunteers in the youth corps that comes in and works with us, that we're one of the few counties that our staff actually gets out and works with them. It's not that we just hand off a project to them and say, you go do it. We've got staff that's actually there working with them along the way. And they've commented how much they appreciate and they recognize the value that Story County brings to these types of projects, because they're willing to make sure that it's done in a good manner. So I just wanted the board to acknowledge that when we receive reports like that, it's something that all of us need to be very appreciative of. Not only what Mike Cox has done, but also how he's engaged his staff for the betterment of Story County.
So I believe we've got the best Conservation Board, Conservation Director, and Conservation Staff in the state. But I'll say it nicer than that, I think we've got those three as good as anybody in the state. Now, we've got to figure out how to consistently and reliably fund conservation. I-Will needs to be an I-done and needs to finally get finished off. And we need to figure out how we can take this outstanding organization and really utilize it to the full benefit of all those in Story County and statewide and nationwide. Marty, any announcements?
Mike Cox and I will be meeting with two, the key cooperative and landowner in the Zering area for a trail completion discussion in regards to walking path in Zering here coming up, we'll get a date picked. And I would agree, my short time here on the board, my working with Mike Cox has been wonderful. I mean, he is a resource that I didn't know what you're going to do after Steve Blackwell, but I think he can figure. Kudos to my, both predecessor and my cohorts here that did hire well. To that end, I think that I don't necessarily share any trepidation about the fact that the DuPont fire is one of those things that came to us in the middle of the night. I'm one of those affected people. My home was filled with smoke on Friday morning. It is still a fire in progress. It is something that is emergent and before us. We have no path forward that, other than what we discover as we go. I think that DuPont is a willing player at the table. I can, I spoke with both Keith and Melissa about this myself. I think they're doing all that they can to make us as a board aware and the public aware. But I, I share the concerns that people have. As my, where I live is affected by the small path. And I think what we did today may cause heartburn in some corners, but I think that the fact that we get it out there and the people can read about it, that we try to get it out there in a way that gives the public some knowledge of what we're both capable of doing and what we will do in the future of this, if and probably when it happens again.
Mr. Chair, one other announcement.
Yeah. Go ahead, I'll bet it.
With Thursday and Friday this week, the ISAC Supervised Affiliates is having its annual retreat in Humboldt. And I will be attending that retreat field today. And I did ask Mike Cox last night if they had any issues and he wanted me to, to reiterate the strong push from county supervisors on the I-Will project and try and move that forward. So thank you for bringing that up.
Sure, absolutely. And I'll just, I guess I'll close full circle, go back to the beginning. I think it is comical bordering on ludicrous that we could have somebody complain that the board is sharing too much public information as we had today. And I believe that this board is the right place to make sure that people have an opportunity to come forward and talk about what's going on in the community. That's why we have public comment number one and public comment number two. And so, you know, it just proves that we're in the middle of silly season right now that somebody's going to complain about that. If there's nothing else, I take a motion to a.
Don't move a second.
All those in favor say aye. We're adjourned.